This is a time set for a Tupper hearing involving potential financing for Asbury, locally known as Bethany. Uh, the financing is typical of what the county has done before. We've done other financings for Asbury. Uh, no county assets are being pledged, no taxing authority of any sort is being pledged by the county or the authority. Uh, the borrower in this situation, Asbury is paying all the costs. Uh, the uh, project is in Cumberland County and then there's another Erie.
Erie, yes.
At a related facility. They've already had a Tupper hearing at Erie and and they're they have approved it. Um, I have with me is Brian Buduski, who is the, excuse me, the executive director of Bethany. I've asked him just give very brief overview of what's going to be done in the county at that facility.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. Uh, I appreciate the introduction. Uh, we are looking at probably about nine point seven million dollars that we're looking at to generate and use for capital improvements throughout our campus. Our campus is going on fifty-eight years old. And it's broken down into three different categories of our main administrative buildings, our west apartments, and general campus needs, which include HVAC, uh, structured land development, uh, plan and so forth. If you have any questions for me that I can help out with.
How long do you think the project will be, sir?
Uh, we kind of, we scheduled it for like a two to three year period starting this year. Uh, and we wanted to spread it out at number of reasons based upon uh vendors and contractors being available to actually. Uh, but yeah, we have to get this done pretty quick.
Thank you. I also have Melissa Messina here, who's a counsel with HJ Sims, who's working on the financing. In case there's any questions on the financing. Your authority met last week and approved the resolution to proceed. And what they're asking you to do is during your regular meeting is to approve a similar resolution authorizing the authority to proceed with the finance. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have a business item on for today to address that, so. Do so. Uh, any additional questions for Mr. Gilroy, Solicitor, without the authority?
Yeah.
Hello?
Public.
Okay, uh.
Any public comment?
Public comment, any public comment?
Yeah, I um, I have a question. My name's Wilmer Baker.
Yes, sir. Uh, your, your home municipality, Mr. Baker?
My what?
Your home municipality for the.
Lower Frankfurt.
Lower Frankfurt, Texas. Thanks.
I just got to wonder about, uh, you know, the fact that money is going from Cumberland County to Erie, which is outside your municipality. And I've had three instances of nursing homes in Cumberland County. I have my mother-in-law die at Claremont. I had my mother get killed at Sarah Todd. And I had my Aunt Ethel that was scared and died down in Bethany Village. And I could tell you, all three places, the healthcare is not the best for these older people. I've gone into these nursing homes, visiting relatives and stuff. They're soiled. They don't have enough staff. Uh, these people are just put into what you might as well consider a slaughterhouse because these people aren't being taken care of. My mother-in-law, when she went into Claremont, she was walking and she was in good shape. By the time they were done with her, she couldn't walk and was in a wheelchair. We went to take her down to visit her family for the last time. When we went up to pick her up, she was dead. Went to see my Aunt Ethel with my mother. She's down in Bethany Village and I have two relatives that work down there. She got to a point she was so paranoid and scared. And she says she heard voices and everything and nobody would come and check on her. And that's with two relatives speaking that. But the big one is Sarah Todd. Now I looked in the paper and Sarah Todd now has put a uh article in the newspaper that they are now going to adhere to uh discrimination rules that they will not discriminate against people for uh, you know, their disabilities or their race or how much poverty they're in or anything, and they'll accept that. When I read that, that gave me a red flag that you're advertising because something's wrong. From where I come from, if it doesn't make sense, it's a lie. I was my mom's.
Okay, Mr. Baker, you're, we're really off topic for this, for the financing question.
Okay.
Um, you know, I, I think we all recognize there's severe challenges in the skilled nursing and long-term health industries in this, sectors in this uh country. I don't think we're going to address them here. The purpose here is to provide an avenue for Bethany to improve their facilities and have a, a, a good facility.
Okay.
And we're very in favor of that, so.
Okay, in Cumberland County, I have no problem. You sending money up to Erie, which is outside the jurisdiction here?
Are we sending money to Erie?
No, the county's not sending money anywhere. It's all funds of of Bethany.
Yeah, but they, they're sending the, the money up to Erie to improve their campus up there.
Mr. Gilroy, if I could ask a question?
Sure.
Why do you have, why does the authority have to come before the commissioners and ask for this resolution?
It's uh, it's designed because it, by the authority and the commissioners authorizing the borrowing, it becomes a tax-free loan. Otherwise, the uh facilities would have to do taxable loans, pay higher interest rates, incur additional costs. So that's the advantage of the authority and the commissioners.
Could you speak very briefly to whose, what the eligibility is, what types of organizations have we allowed?
Five oh one C three organizations and uh, uh, as I mentioned earlier today to Commissioner Fossey. Uh, for years, we, we, the authority was advised only organizations that have affiliation with the county. So it's not like something outside of the county could come in and to be doing work. But because this facility is within the county, they've asked to add on the borrowing. Again, it's not money sent from the county to them. It's just additional part of their loans.
Okay, and so, so I believe that I have understood correctly that there was also a Tupper hearing in Erie County.
That's right.
And so, and I don't think there are commissioners in Erie County?
I don't, they would not have to act on it because they're not approving.
Okay.
They just had a hearing for public comment. Ideally, the, well, realistically, the Tupper hearing is designed to take public comment for the commissioners to determine if there's something that should uh proceed.
Okay, so but, so if I'm looking, I'm looking at the agenda, so we're having a hearing and then when we get into the commissioners meeting, this, there's a discussion and a, a discussion and approval of this particular resolution, but you're telling me in Erie County, those commissioners have not approved yet?
Well, I'm dealing with counsel for Asbury. You know, if the Erie County Commissioners have approved the resolution?
So the Erie County uh Commissioners held the notice of public hearing because the issuer of the bonds would be the Cumberland County Municipal Authority. That's why the Cumberland County Commissioners have to host the meeting. Erie County Commissioners don't host an actual approval meeting. They just have the Tupper hearing, this public hearing.
Okay. Any further additional questions?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, if there's nothing additional, consider the, I don't need a motion. Do I just turn her? Okay, I'll try. Thank you for the meeting. Okay, we have um, next order of business is the salary board of the county proceeding the meeting of the board commissioners. So we, salary board as advertised and I'll call that meeting to order and we will begin with a roll call of members present, please.
Commissioner Eichelberger, Commissioner Fossey, I'm here, Commissioner De Palippo, Controller Whitcomb.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Right, at this point, we have public comment for issues before the salary. Any comment salary? Okay, I see none. There's no one online. All right, we have the salary board actions, which were reviewed previously with the salary board executive session. Um, I want to take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the salary board actions.
Second, let's move to second. Any further questions? All in favor, you keep us say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to business item number five. We have the minutes of our meeting of June thirteen and those required actions.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June thirteenth.
I'll second.
Yes, moved and seconded. There's no further questions. All in favor, you keep us say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, is there any additional business to come before the salary board? Nothing. So undertake a motion for adjournments.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Stand adjourned. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the uh meeting of the board commissioners and I'm asking you to stand.
Let's leave this to the United States. And to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, preservate the earth, justice.
Okay. Thank you for that and call the meeting to order. Once again, beginning with a roll call, members present.
Commissioner Eichelberger, Commissioner Fossey, come here, Commissioner De Palippo.
Present.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, we have opportunity for public comment for anyone wishing to address the board.
One more time?
Yes, Mr. Baker.
We go this way, we go this way of the uh, the nursing homes. So the last nursing home was Sarah Todd. They advertised in the paper recently that they're going to adhere to all kinds of civil rights and everything. I was my mom's caretaker. Okay, from two thousand sixteen, she was good as gold and she fell. Carlisle Hospital sent her to Sarah Todd for rehabilitation. She had insurance for one month. Not one month time, she went from three medications that I had her down to, to fourteen of them. On the day that her insurance was running out, I went and took her home. I took her back to the house. I put her to bed. I brought her cat in and laid the cat beside her and my mom never woke up. Sarah Todd killed my mother.
Mr. Baker, I have to ask you if your comments have anything to do with county business?
It does. If you're financing these nursing homes, I think these nursing homes ought to adhere to the federal guidelines of having enough staff people where you two commissioners were there in Claremont Farm, nursing home, helping out. They're understaffed. They have people that are sitting there in dementia units that are soiling themselves and they're not being taken care of. For the twenty million dollars that you're sending up to Erie, you could have paid for Claremont Nursing Home and had enough money.
We are not, we are not sending twenty million dollars to Erie. That's a misstatement.
No, you're putting, you're putting together bonds.
No, they're putting together bonds.
They're putting together bonds.
We are granting permission for those bonds to be issued free of federal taxation.
Okay, but shouldn't that have gone to Claremont Nursing Homes?
I think you are conflating very separate issues. I'm not hearing anything.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Related, I'm not, I mean, not hearing anything related to county business here. Claremont is no longer a county facility, is, is.
Well, the deal has been done.
That, that facility has been transferred.
Sold off and responsibility of the old people there that aren't being taken care of is outside of your hands.
Well, every facility here has to meet federal standards and.
Well, they're not meeting federal standards unless you're bringing in federal agents. So, come on. All you have to do is go to any nursing home and see that the care is not being taken care of. Bethany Village has a couple of my relatives working down there and my aunt died there and she was so afraid.
This is an issue for the federal and state, but mostly the federal government to.
Well, before you issue money to these people, don't you think they ought to be checked out?
We're not issuing money.
Okay, you're putting bonds together.
Providing, we are providing community permission for the, for the advancement of a community benefit facility to be free of federal taxation on the financial transaction.
And only if they adhere to federal guidelines?
I'm sure there, there's all kinds of compliance requirements. That is, that is not our.
I, I, I'm going to tell you, I, I've asked similar questions.
Thank you.
I, I have. I, I, I've asked similar questions. Um, so I am interested in this, in the particular, in this bond issue and where does the money come from for the bonds? I mean, thank you.
Go ahead.
So hi, my name's Melissa Messina. I'm an attorney. I am also an investment banker at HJ Sims. Um, and I've been before this commission a couple of times uh before. So uh, there, the money for these bonds is being lent from Truist Bank. So it is a bank loan that comes from Truist and it gets advanced to um Asbury communities and they borrow the money and they use it to fix their communities, both here in Bethany Village and in Erie. There's absolutely no aspect of anything related to Cumberland County um associated with the bonds, except for their names being listed as the issuer of the bonds in order for the bond, for the bank to get paid interest and for the bank's interest to be exempt from taxation. We need a municipality to put their name associated with the bonds, but no taxing authority, no pledge, no support, no nothing. If something goes wrong with the bonds, everything is fine. Nothing comes back on Cumberland County and Cumberland County is not lending any of its uh, anything except for literally the name of it.
So it is an interesting question. Uh, I, I'm not kidding you. I, I came, I asked almost the exact same question earlier today. And so I really and truly, when I see a bond issue, there's a couple of things that in my near three years here make me go hmm. So one is that I know that people came to us and said, you know, don't, don't, don't sell Claremont, do a bond issue. And, and now, you know, that was, I, I did not vote in favor of the sale of Claremont. Um, but the other thing is that we had a local college come and ask us to guarantee, what was it, a sixteen million dollar bond issue? So I, I think there's legitimate concerns in saying, are there county tax dollars going for this bond issue? And if I'm, if I read the documents correctly, what is happening is that this is Cumberland County's name as the issuer is necessary so that you get that freedom from federal tax. And that is the only reason that we are on the bonds.
Yes, that is a hundred percent correct.
That's what you just explained, so.
Yes, but I like that she re-characterized that perfectly. Yes.
Okay, because I mean, I've asked, I have asked, you know, I came and asked.
Sure.
There is some.
That's why we gave a little bit more of a presentation here today.
Because I, I appreciate very much. And so if there are two people in the room that are going hmm, and this is my three years of experience with Cumberland County Government where, where this issue with bonds, the conversation about bonds has come up, it's not, it's not out of the realm of reason to ask the question. That's why we have a public hearing.
Most municipal bond issues are to borrow money for the municipality.
Correct.
For the municipalities' construction projects or whatever.
Which we are on the hook.
Yeah, on the hook and, and your taxing authority is, is pledged for that, but uh, nothing along these lines.
But we're not on the hook this time. That's why we have to be very careful with our words and the things that we utter in our public meetings.
Right.
Because if it gets picked up somewhere and it sounds like we are on the hook, but we're not.
Yeah, all the documentation is clearly states that the bondholders must look to uh Asbury for uh all return. There's no, they can't look to the county, you can't look to the authority.
You remember this is different in any way than the multitude of other bonds that we've endorsed.
No, we've got a couple prior for Asbury and you've done them for Dickinson College, Messiah, uh, some uh, Diakon, uh, so we've done them for a variety of nonprofits.
There's nothing extra right here.
Okay, I'd like to speak to the one that you're talking about in the college. That one, we would have been on the hook for.
Yes.
Didn't turn that away.
Yes.
That would have been a bad decision for us. We always check to make sure we are not.
Um, right.
On the hook for it.
Which, which college was that?
Ask you again. Because of their, their change from nonprofit status to profit status.
Oh, yeah.
Their financing required, uh, short-term backing.
Yep.
City requested us.
I don't think, I don't remember that being short-term backing though. I thought that was pretty long-term.
They weren't going to the authority, were they? No, not that I remember. Yeah.
No, not three years now. Okay.
Okay.
One more question now. Would your approval of these bonds be based on the fact that these institutions come up the federal guidelines? Or are we just going to hand everybody money and give them your name to use so that it can continue that the older people are not being taken care of? I know, ma'am, that your mothers in Clare.
No, my mother is in assisted living center in Clearfield County.
Okay. But I know that two of you commissioners went there and actually did turn taking care of the older people that were in Claremont. And we should be putting more money into these retirement homes, bring this up the guidelines of federal government. Not just saying, well, we want a cheap bond here so we can continue doing what we want to do. We don't want to do that. We want to make sure the old people's civil rights are not being violated and they are. And this is my opinion. They are. Every uh nursing home that I've been in touch with in Cumberland County is basically understaffed and the patients aren't being taken care of. That doesn't come up the federal guidelines.
Federal government responsibility. Uh, again, that's a federal government responsibility to, to implement their own guidelines and oversee them.
But that's not what I'm asking.
Can't, we can't fix that.
That's, that's not what I'm asking you, sir. I'm asking before you give your approval out that these institutions come up to that guideline and then you can give them all the, the bond money and everything that you want to. But until they come up to the guidelines of the federal government and everything that these older people are being taken care of, I won't issue your approval because you're just condoning the fact that these people are understaffed.
Maybe Brian can take fifteen seconds to answer that.
Yeah, we are, we are regulated by both the Pennsylvania Department of Health and the CMS, which is a federal agency that regulates nursing homes within the country. And we are within, uh, we are in compliance with both agencies a, and they look at us on an annual basis as it relates to not only our, what we're, how we're dealing with our residents and making sure we take care of them, but if there's any other significant issues, they also come in and we work with them on that. But I can, you can rest assured we are within those guidelines and in compliance in, under both regulatory agencies.
Okay, are you willing to uh provide the commissioners' documentation before they approve?
That's public. You can get, you can go online and, and.
So, no, I'm not asking you to go online.
Right.
I'm asking, are you willing to put the documentations forward to the commissioners here so that they can.
If they require, I will, I will provide any request.
And, and after that, you can give them money.
We, we.
But don't, don't approve, don't approve bonds.
We have regularly reviewed the CMS ratings for all nursing homes in the area as part of our previous ownership of Claremont.
Okay.
Uh, we've never seen any flags, red flags related to uh Bethany or uh, I'm not aware of any other than maybe one other one, which is nowhere near here, but.
I just, I told you three.
So I, I'm not aware of any of them being flagged. I am personally not aware of any of them being flagged by CMS with their rating standard.
I'm telling you, three instances where my mother-in-law went down the tubes real quick at Claremont.
Okay, the, that's, it's all, we've heard, it's anecdotal, it's incidental. I'm not, I'm not going to talk about.
Reality to me because these are relatives buying and paying the price.
I understand, I understand.
Nursing homes. Nursing homes to me are slaughterhouses. Some of the animals that you have out here for the humane society have more rights than the older people that are in these nursing homes.
Are there proper avenues for your advocacy?
Nah.
You're certainly entitled to. This is not one.
Why isn't this one?
Because it's not relevant. We, we do not oversee the ratings and the, the conduct of it. They meet the federal standard from everything that we have seen.
And you've seen it? You've got documentation to show that?
On a regular basis. Haven't seen it lately, but those things develop over the course of long periods of time.
But do you have documentation, sir, to show the public that they do come up the standards before you give them the approval to give them money? Why are you giving them money if they're below standard?
We're not giving them money, all right?
You're not signing for a cheaper on the bond. I got you on that. You don't have to explain to me on that. What I'm asking you is to get documentation that they come up with a federal guideline. Just because this fellow tells me they do, doesn't mean anything to me.
We can do one of two things. We can either, if this is an agenda item today, we can either pass it contingent upon our review of those documents or we, is there a time deadline on this or we could delay this if there's.
We'd prefer if you approve it contingent upon us producing the documents, which we're happy to do.
Okay.
And I can submit them to your solicitors.
Is that a satisfactory objection, areas? Okay. All right, very good. Okay, thank you, folks, but thank you for the additional information. Appreciate that, like you provide that. So um, okay, so that is item three. Any additional issues that others want to bring before the board commissioners or anyone online? There's not. All right, we will move on to business item four. We have the minutes in hand of our meetings of June nine and June thirteen.
To me, it's been one more time. I didn't do this too much. But at the last meeting that you had, you had a fellow that was sitting here talking about how they were doing uh, given shots with needles so people didn't get HIV because of the opioid, uh, the OxyContin uh addiction. I bring you this fellow here that was on OxyContin, okay? One and a half years he was on it. And he tried to get off of it and the doctor said, because this man's in poverty, the doctor said we can either up the amount that you're getting or you can go through withdrawals. They gave him fentanyl. This man here turned around and he was told to start a lawsuit. Well, Cumberland County gave him a public defender. And he started a lawsuit against the doctors and now Lovelace was his lawyer. He won't contact me. And now every time that this man goes to the doctors, they blackball him. They won't give him medication. They sent him down to Mechanicsburg and the guy said, we're not giving you anything but leave. This man is still waiting to be relieved of pain because the doctors addicted him. The fellow that sat here at your last meeting was saying about, oh, we're, we want to do this with needles so people don't get HIV and everything. Pittsburgh and Philadelphia all have programs and everything to do this. This fellow here is paying the price because of what the doctors did to him. So I thought I'd bring you to your attention because of this fellow here at the last meeting saying, well, we need to be able to give people shots. So I just thought I'd bring him here as proof about the oxy thing and uh, I don't know where you went with that. Whether you approved it or not.
Or did you wish to address the issue at hand here at all or?
Well, I must say, simply put, when everything come out of the OxyContin stuff, that was a darn disaster right from the beginning. They should have never allowed such a dangerous drug to get handed out by the doctors in volume. And look at all the people that got sick or else passed away from that OxyContin. Bad choice. I went through it. That stuff was making me sick. I raised a voice of concern to the doctors that it's making me sick. It's too much, too strong. Oh no, that's what we prescribed you. That's your regimen. That's what you got to take the rest of your life. It's been a disaster since then. Now they got the OxyContin thing being sued to prove pharmaceutical, the makers of it. They should have never made such a thing and now we got fentanyl as well and that's killing people and now it's out on the streets even because being imported from China and these other foreign countries. It's all over the news. Yeah, I feel like I have been abused by the doctors, ignored by the doctors. And uh, it really hurts. On top of my pain, I'm in. MS caused multiple sclerosis, causes pain and it just hard to walk, hard to maneuver. I'm stumbling and staggering, something special on a hot day like today and now the doctors don't want to treat me at all. I got sent from UPMC down to another one of their facilities in Mechanicsburg. The doctor came right up, he says, I ain't gonna help you at all. So I went down there and the medical, the insurance money was wasted. And I didn't even get a referral. I've been sent back and forth a couple of times. And now, once I try and get in the doctor, right away, they didn't like much to do with me because I turned the other two in. Uh, Douglas Bauer up at um Baslin's and Regina Smith in Mechanicsburg. Two doctors literally poisoned me. Well, if you're in pain, that's what you got to take. That's your regimen. I'll never trust doctors again to tell you all the truth. Now you can't even get your MS medication now. Yeah, and I quit taking the OxyContin and all the other medicines that I was being given a couple of years back. One of them was Alunex, injectable into your muscle once a week. I quit taking all of the stuff because I didn't know what was making me sick, but it was the OxyContin altogether. And they offered me fentanyl on top of it. And I thought, my goodness, you're trying to kill me. Look at all the other people that have died. And fentanyl should not be on the market either, whether it's made by a manufacturer and certainly should not be all over the place. I asked to call the police. I said, yeah, there's fentanyl in town here. It's probably the stuff that's coming into China. Now my mom had MS really bad, much worse than I did. She was in continuous pain. Tears were coming down her eyes all the time. The front of her blouse was soaked all the time.
All right, well, we're, we're not familiar with what supports you already have. Is there anyone referring to her?
Saddle Health Center.
Saddle refused to take my teeth out years ago and I filed a complaint against them. They got in trouble from what I understand. And then they said they don't want to see me again.
Maybe we can, maybe after this meeting, we can, we can have a conversation and.
Okay.
I can help you to, to try to get you an appointment at Saddle.
Maybe so. That's been years.
Right, so maybe, maybe it's worth a try again.
The doctors kept telling me, you're, your teeth are all bad or broke off. I was in a construction accident and the whole front of them knocked out with a steel beam. Anyhow, that went on for years. You got to take my teeth out. Okay, they give me a appointment, you get in there. Alls we can do is clean your teeth. We can't take them out.
And I know the thing.
I went to the Office of Aging. I went to the Office of Aging for years. They called numerous places trying to get me to have my teeth taken out and all of them refusing. Then they finally got ahold of a place in Harrisburg called Dental Dreams. Right away, they took the teeth out. Right away. Yet all the other places got an office charge for me coming in, telling them the problem. And I'd show them. They'd go, oh my God, they are all bad, broken, whatnot. I was getting infections in my gums and Saddle refused to help me back in. So I'm not too happy with them either from past experience.
But you can try. When the meeting's over, we can, we can see what we can do.
But. But being avoided by the doctors now, and I would like that multiple sclerosis medicine back because I do believe that did help. It, it makes your immune system more stronger. It's interferon it's called. Or Avonex is the manufacturer name. But yeah, I'm not a happy customer. I know there's a lot of other people that aren't either. They're suffering. And now since the oxycontin scale, now they've taken a lot of pain medicine off the off the prescribed list. Now, none of them don't want to give you none of it. I'm in pain, darn it. That's all I can say. I ignored, but it's hurting me. I cry at night. It's terrible. I feel like I'm not wired. And then shut the side, ignored. That's basically what it is. Thank you. I can say it all in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll, we'll address that after the meeting, see if we can get some, uh, some assistance there for you. All right, um. All right, so we, now we've concluded public comment. Let's move on to item four, the minutes of June nine and June thirteenth. We have those in hand. They were reviewed.
Move to approve the minutes of June ninth and June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we've got item five, that is personnel transactions, documentation holders discussed. Uh, previously, we have a motion for adoption on that.
I will move to approve the personnel transactions.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item six is the, um, topic of, from our earlier temporary hearing is the, this would involve a resolution, resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirteen. And this would be lending our approval to the, uh, endorsement of the bonds for the municipal authority for the folks who are here today, Bethany Village and Spring Hill. So, uh, we can either, we can take action. I'll entertain any motion on this. At this point, if there's no other questions.
Commissioner Eichelberger.
This is.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. This would be contingent upon Asbury providing documentation concerning its federal CMS compliance to the board of commissioners.
That should be part of it.
I apologize for interrupting you again.
Repeat that again, please.
It would be contingent, approval would be contingent upon Asbury providing documentation concerning its federal CMS compliance.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirteen contingent on receiving documentation. And Asbury's documentation complies with CMS. And also contingent upon the approval of our solicitor.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so moved, seconded. For the further questions. At this point, we're team the motion, uh, or we'll call the motion. All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Would be excused?
Absolutely.
One more question now. Will this be at the next, uh, meeting with the commissioners?
This is done.
No, I mean, you're putting this on contingency until you get the documentation.
It is approved as long as they provide the documentation to us.
And that will be brought up at the next commissioner's meeting, correct?
It doesn't need to be brought up at the next.
No, it does not.
It's a contingency. Right.
Okay, did I have a copy of? What did you get?
You'll need to make a write-down request when we get that information.
You know me, sir. You know me from another municipality, Lower Frankfurt, where I've listened to you on other occasions.
Right.
Contact me. I'll provide you with the same thing I provided, Mr. Baker.
Are you coming to the next township meeting?
I hope, I hope not.
Well, then how am I going to get a copy of what are?
No, because you need mail. Because you need that mail to you because you don't use.
Yes, I don't do internet or anything because my eyes be in a well for all them years.
We can provide you with this one tactic for me.
I'll be.
You have a set house?
We do.
Because I was given, I was given a telephone number for the, uh, local emergency management. Gave me the guy's name. I called in here. The switchboard said, well, he doesn't have an o- office. But we'll give it to his assistant. Apparently it rang here. I said.
But they will see that you get it and if they.
No, no, I'm talking about this is.
Let's talk about this after the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Uh, item seven is additional resolution. This is resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve. This is the budget adjustments that we're reviewing at the workshop.
I will move to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve regarding the budget, budget adjustments.
So I can, is moved and seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, item eight is the requisite approval contracts and grants. We have these once again. And one, representing existing contracts and extensions. An addendum. And item two, which is all new contracts. And we can do these other together or separate. Please.
Let's move to approved contracts and grants. It's an item eight, one, A through G, and item eight, two, through Y.
I second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. So let plenty decide, I assume. That's the stack, okay. Okay, uh, item nine is the authorization advertised for the bridge debris removal project. This also was reviewed at the workshop. We received follow-up information on that. So are there any questions? No, if not, entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the authorization to advertise for the bridge debris removal project.
Second. Moved and seconded. If no further questions, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item ten is the authorization to advertise for purchase of a GPS total station. This also through workshop.
Move to authorize advertising for the purchase of the GPS total station.
I second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, item twelve is the, um, recommendation received regarding our county property liability insurance. That would be renewal with travelers. So we have action required on that. If anyone has any questions now is the time. If not, entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the Cumberland County property and liability insurance recommendation memo.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, we also have, uh, item twelve, a capital project request that requires action. This also was reviewed at the workshop for the district attorney's office.
Move to approve the capital project request for the district attorney's office, which would be a replacement copier for the district attorney and appellate division total project cost thirty thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars, seventy-six cents.
I second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, item thirteen is the approval of the general disbursements transfers as authorized.
I will move to approve the general dispersments transfer authorizations set forth on item thirteen A through F of the agenda.
Second. Moved and seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to item fourteen, which is other business. Anything additional commissioners to bring? Staff, anything additional? Okay, very good. That will entertain a motion for adjournment. With your standard.